Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the Willoughby Eastlake School Board meeting. I would like to call to order the meeting of April 11th, 2022. This is our regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake School Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mrs. Crooks, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boxler.
Present.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Vittori.
Here.
Ms. Menzler.
Here.
Ms. Baer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Crooks. I would like to welcome everyone to our regular meeting of our school board. And there's a few announcements before we get started. First, Dr. Thompson and Mr. Charnella were unable to attend tonight due to pre-scheduled conflicts. With us in their place, we have Mr. Charles Murphy, our Assistant Superintendent. And as well, we have Mrs. Donna Crooks here, she's our Assistant Treasurer here for Mr. Charnello. So thank you very much for helping us out this evening. And also, a special thanks to our students at South High School from the school store. We are all wearing the shirts that they gifted us at our last school board meeting, and we are very much so in favor of this uniform and may be permanently adopted. So once again, a huge thanks to them, and we are excited to have students from North here this evening. Okay, just a few housecleaning items. Number one, prior to this evening, each board member has received for our review and consideration the agenda and the materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. The board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and treasurer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. This meeting's agenda is always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to each board meeting. And community members can always email the board directly with questions, or they can come and participate in the public comment portion of our meetings. Public comment provides an opportunity for our community to address the school board directly. To participate in public comments, participants would need to sign up before the meeting begins. And when you sign up, you kind of indicate what you would like to discuss. Now, as this meeting progresses, you will see the board discuss a variety of items on our agenda. Some of these we do not vote on, others we do. The items that we do not vote on immediately are marked with an asterisk on the agenda. These items are a part of what we call our consent calendar. To ensure our meetings move along, we vote to approve all of these items at the end of the meeting. Other items without an asterisk are voted on individually for a variety of reasons which are outlined within our policies. Lastly, the way in which we conduct our meetings is outlined in our policies. You can find and view these on the Board of Education tab on the district's website. And with that, we'll now move on to our agenda. Okay. I'm sorry. And I skipped the Pledge of Allegiance and all of my excitement, so if you would please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vittori, for the save. Okay. Now we can go to our regularly scheduled programming. Okay, let's see. So on item one, number D, the appointment of our Treasurer Pro temp. Do I hear a motion to approve the appointment of our Treasurer Pro temp?
Madam President.
Yes, Mrs. Menzler?
I'll make a motion to appoint Treasurer Pro Temp.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Roscoe's. Okay, any discussion? We've already introduced her. Once again, she's our Assistant Treasurer. Okay, Mrs. Crooks, take it away.
Mr. Boxler.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe's.
Yes.
Mr. Vittori.
Yes.
Ms. Menzler.
Yes.
Ms. Baer.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item two, approval of our agenda. Item two A, do I hear a motion to approve the approval of our agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item two A, approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vittori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Mrs. Crooks.
Mr. Boxler.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe's.
Yes.
Mr. Vittori.
Yes.
Ms. Menzler.
Yes.
Ms. Baer.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number three, Community Engagement. Number A, letter A, rather, is Eric Frye, Principal of North High School with our top 10 seniors.
Madam President, fellow board members, Mr. Murphy, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the North High School top 10 seniors for the class of 2022. Interestingly enough, we have 11 students that we're going to recognize tonight because there was a tie, of all things. But this is a tremendous achievement for what these students have done. This is the culmination of an amazing high school career, and these are the best of the best. And so, this is one of our favorite nights of the year to get to honor these students. Students, as your name is called, I'm going to have you come up and stand here next to the podium. Mr. Lyons has a plaque for you, and then you're going to stand here and awkwardly shuffle your feet and look at the floor while I read off how wonderful you are for everybody. And then, you can return to your seats, thankfully. And then, at the very end, we'll have everybody go back out, and all of the students can stand in the lobby together for some photo ops for everybody that wants them. All right, so we don't have to do that in the meeting room. All right? So, without further ado, our first member of the top 10 is Katie Alexander. Katie was a member of the volleyball team, National Honor Society, and homecoming court. In the fall, she will be attending the Ohio State University where she plans to study civil engineering. Katie Alexander, everyone. Next, we have Sarah Chase. Sarah has been the squad leader for marching band for the past two years, as well as being a member of the swim team. She was also involved in drama club, is a student council officer, and is a member of National Honor Society. In the fall, she will be attending either the Ohio State University or Miami University, studying business analytics and finance with a pre-law focus. Sarah Chase, everybody. Next, we have Sally Dempsey. Sally was a member of the soccer team, swim team, National Honor Society, and art club. In the fall, she will be attending the Ohio State University. And listen carefully to this one. Sally received the prestigious Ohio State University Land Grant Scholarship, given to one student annually in every county in Ohio, and it's a four-year full scholarship. Next, we have Kayla Hall. Kayla has been a cheerleader for both football and basketball, as well as being a part of competition cheer. She is also on the soccer team. In her free time, she is involved in National Honor Society, Student Council, Buckeye Girls' State, and was involved in Project Opioid as well. Kayla will be attending Miami University this fall, where she will study political science in the pre-law track. Next, we have Dylan Janos. Dylan was a member of both the track and cross-country teams, and this fall, he will be attending Ohio University, Go Bobcats, where he plans to study English. Next, we have Kyra Kiesling. Kyra has been a member of cross-country, marching band, track, National Honor Society, and Wind Symphony. This fall, she will be attending Muskingham University, where she too will be studying political science and focusing on the pre-law track. Raul was on the football team, he was on the track team, he sang in Northern Lights, and was in National Honor Society. He is most proud, though, of his efforts as the coach of the girls' Powder Puff. In the fall, he will be attending the Ohio State University where he plans to study some form of engineering, so congratulations. Next, we have Varunda Patel. Varunda was a member of the tennis team and art club during her time at North. She's not sure exactly which school she's going to go to, but is weighing her options between the Ohio State University and CSU. But either way, she plans to study pharmacy, so congratulations. Next, we have Michael Shishiano. Michael is a member of National Honor Society and Volunteers Club. He participates on the track team and soccer teams. In the fall, he will be attending Mr. Lyons' alma mater, University of Mount Union, where he plans to study mechanical engineering. Joseph was a member of the track team, National Honor Society, and was an inaugural member of the Ranger Rick mascot team. This fall, he will be attending John Carroll University, where he plans to major in finance and business. And last but not least, we have Anna Turner. Is Anna here tonight? Anna? Anna couldn't make it tonight, she wasn't sure, but I will let you know that Anna spent most of the last two years as a full-time CCP student at Lakeland. While at Lakeland, she participated in the Emerging Leaders Program, Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society, and Sigma Kappa Delta National English Honor Society, and she is still weighing her college options as well. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could, one more time, a round of applause for these amazing students. And unless the board has anything else they would like to talk to us about, we're going to let everybody go out to the lobby for some photo opportunities.
I would just like to point out, Sarah Chase, you should really consider Miami University versus Ohio State. That's my alma mater. Go Redhawks.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you so much for coming tonight. We'll just give them a quick minute to kind of settle and get out there to enjoy the moment together. How many do you think are going to come back to enjoy our meeting?
Three.
I think that's high. That's okay. Hopefully, they go out and celebrate.
Yeah.
Okay. It's going to be hard to follow them, but we'll start with, once again, we're still on item number three, Community Engagement, letter B. We have a presentation from OSBA today, Miss Sally Green, for our Purple Star Award. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, Board Members, and Assistant Treasurer Chuck Murphy, thank you for inviting me this evening that I could give them this award. But before I start the award, I just want to talk to the board members. I want to put a plug in for Ohio School Board Association. They are having their BLI, which is the Board Leadership Institute, May 6th and 7th. This is a workshop that is only for board members, no other members of schools can come, only board members. It's a good time for team leadership, networking, and information that's going on, current information. So I would plug that to you. If you can't come, at least send one board member, and they can share it with you. So with that in mind, it's an honor to be with you this evening. I am the president of the Northeast Region, the Ohio School Board Association, and I'm here to give the honor of Purple Star to your school district. Now, each school, as they receive the Purple Star, will get a plaque from the Ohio Department of Education, but the Northeast Region firmly believes that it's the board members and the leadership of the team that starts this and process, and without your commitment, this could not be achieved. So we feel like you deserve an award too, so that's why we are here this evening. Now, the Purple Star is designated, you have eight schools, eight of your schools have received this. I want to share with you that in the Northeast Region, there's 225 school districts, 19 counties. Your school has the largest number of schools that are receiving this award, and you have the largest percentage of schools receiving this award. So kudos to you. Congratulations. Now, many of you are saying, what is a Purple Star? The Purple Star is the award given to military-friendly schools that show significant commitment to serving students and their families connected with our nation's armed forces. This demonstrates the commitment to meeting the unique social, emotional, and academic needs of the Ohio military-connected youth. So thank you for doing that, and I would like to recognize the schools, just in case those out here are not familiar with which schools did receive the award. The Longfellow Elementary School received the award, the Thomas Jefferson Elementary School received the award, Royal View Elementary, Willow Wick Middle School, Willoughby Middle School, Eastlake Middle School, North High School, and the School of Innovation. So again, congratulations. I am just so happy to be able to present this award to you. So, Assistant Chuck Murphy? It is my honor and privilege to present this to your school district.
Want to come around?
You got to walk around.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, guys. So proud. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Green. A night of events. Okay. We'll continue on in our agenda. Item three, Community Engagement, letter C, Board President Q and A. So in last month's school board meeting, we did not have anybody speak during public participation, so there are no responses to those that spoke. So we'll just move on. Item three, Community Engagement, letter D, we're now in our public comment section. Before we begin, we always like to read our public participation policy to ensure that everyone is informed and ready to work within the requirements of our policy. Stick with me for a minute, it's a little bit long, but it's important. Okay, so this is Policy 0169.1, Public Participation at Board Meetings. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or the viewpoint of the speaker. The Board is also committed to conducting its meetings in a productive and efficient manner that assures that the regular agenda of the Board is completed in a reasonable period of time. We honor the voluntary nature of the Board's time, and using that time efficiently, we allow for fair and adequate opportunity for input to be considered. The Presiding Officer, which is the Board President at each meeting, is permitted and shall administer the rules as follows. Okay. A, public participation shall be permitted as indicated in the Order of Business. B, attendees must register their intention to participate in public participation upon the arrival at the meeting. C, individuals may not register others to speak. D, participants must first be recognized by the Presiding Officer and will be requested to preface their comments by the announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes' duration. Thank you for putting the timer up, and it'll be up there for your viewing when you speak. Okay? All statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The Presiding Officer may interrupt, warn, terminate a participant's session when they make comments that are repetitive, obscene, and/or comments that constitute a true threat, or more specified, or, oops, skipped a line, constitute true threat, statements meant to frighten or intimidate one or more specified persons into believing that they will be seriously harmed. Request any individual to stop speaking or leave the meeting when the person does not observe reasonable decorum or is disruptive to the conduct and/or orderly progress of the meeting. And/or request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the conduct and/or orderly progress of the meeting. Almost there. Call for a recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action, and last, could waive these rules. Okay, and with that, Mrs. Crooks, who is our first participant?
Mr. David Galetti.
Stand up.
Right over there, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Galetti. I am the head chaperone, as well as the head roadie for the Eastlake-North Marching Band. I have with me Mike Monreal, who is the booster president for Willoughby South High. The reason for our visit today is that we would like to petition to the Board the use of a drone or pilotless aircraft for strict photographing of the both bands, as a tool, not as a toy. Most people know when you have a drone, it's a tool or a toy, and the kids are playing with it, and they're taking pictures, you know, whatever. We plan on using this for the advancement of our bands, for proper drill instruction, as well as proper, what's the word I'm looking for? Proper?
Programming.
Programming, thank you, or discipline of our young students. Both bands perform very, very well, both in competition as well as in the regular season. But we feel that maybe a drone or some other kind of optical eye may help in the advancement of their talents. Now, this was brought up once before by Mr., right now, I am so nervous, I can't even remember his name, Mr. Sell, over at the Eastlake-North High. And he got a flat-out no from the Board of Education in regards to using a drone. And we would just like to petition as to why. And if we're using this as a tool, and we would follow the guidelines that are laid out by the Board of Education, taking an FAA course, and if both booster officers approve, the money would be allocated from both of the schools' booster treasury. And then, once a particular, oh yeah, one minute, nine seconds, excuse me, once a particular operator would have their license, and it is good for two years. So we were, right now, we don't have anybody who, for any of the schools, that would be taking the drone photographs, if you will, but right now, we were just trying to look for the first step, to get approval that we would be allowed to use such pilotless apparatus to help, you know, further our students.
Only during the competition, or only while the band is on the field?
Exactly. It would only be, you're right, thank you, Michael. It would only be during practice, or during halftime performances, or in the case of, if we host an event, some kind of just video recording for purposes of performance. That's all I have at the immediate moment. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
And just as a note, once again, the Board does not publicly respond in meeting to any participant, but we will respond in the next board meeting. Mrs. Crooks, who's our next participant?
Mr. Pete Engel.
Pete Engel, 181 East 291st Street, Willow Wick. I just had a couple concerns. I'm a parent, as well as a fellow educator, not here in the district, but at another one. And my area of concern was special education in three areas, was one, and they probably could be answered fairly quickly, is what is the hierarchy of special ed? Is there a coordinator? I know there's supervisors, but is there a coordinator that's above them? And if so, how is it listed online? Because I don't see one, if there was. Secondly, is for parents and also for any other educators, there are a list of norms of what students, when you're writing an IEP, in the present levels, that state what the present level of that student is, and it's based off of, or compared to, the norms of what other students would be doing. So my question there is, is there some type of outreach to parents, or maybe kind of classes or anything like that for parents to understand what the norms would be for special education for a student that they think that might have, that might be in line for special education? And then the last one is, how is the protocol for evaluations done? I know, as a fellow educator, there's a certain protocol that you have to follow before an evaluation is done, but my question is, if there's an outside source, like a neuropsych PhD who has a diagnosis of a student, is the protocol to, the school takes that and does an immediate evaluation? Or is there an observation? And if there's an observation, what is the reasoning for that? Because I think sometimes observation could last anywhere from 20 minutes, maybe a whole class period, when an evaluation from a psychologist is a cycle of events. So how fair is that necessarily to the students and to the parents? And then additionally, since I have 52 seconds, I just wanted to say thanks to the school district as well, because I'm a veteran myself, and I've spoken many times at Royal View and also at Willow Wick Middle. So I'm hoping I helped them get that too, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel, and thank you for your service. Mrs. Crooks, who's our next participant?
Mr. Tim O'Keefe.
My name is Tim O'Keefe. My address is 38661 Edward Walsh Drive in Willoughby. And you can start the clock if you want. There you go. The reason I'm here is because tonight on the agenda, you're going to entertain a resolution to become a member of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. And there are some indication that I learned of, is that that organization is or might become interested in having boys compete against girls in girls' sports. And so it's my hope is that, as you discuss, as you consider becoming a member of, if I might use the acronym OSHA, right, is that you give that serious consideration at a minimum. And then if it does, in fact, come to pass, that the Willoughby Eastlake School System immediately disassociates itself from the Ohio High School Athletic Association, right? Period, end of story. Because I think, as with critical race theory, the mishandling of the critical race theory issue by the Willoughby Eastlake, by the prior Willoughby Eastlake Board, they might find themselves, this board might find themselves in a similar mess if the Ohio High School Athletic Association backs that, and then we continue to be a member of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. And if you take a peek, a very close look at the resolution itself, it's quite binding on the Willoughby Eastlake School System to their binding on the Willoughby East Lake School System to their rules and regulations, what, again, I would call OSHA's rules and regulations. And so, if they happen to back that sort of sports activity, from my reading, a layman's reading of the resolution, it's quite binding on the school district to back that policy. And I will tell you quite clearly, if, if you think the critical race theory issue being mishandled by the prior board was a mess, I'm willing to wager that the mishandling of this issue might be as bad or worse. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next participant, Mrs. Crooks.
That's all.
That's all? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So, we will move on to item four, Board Members Business. Item A is our board discussion. So, this is a time in which the board gets to work and discuss things that we've been doing, or would like to discuss in open session. Once again, as a board, we do not and cannot work or have conversations as a group. It's a violation of sunshine laws. So, this is our time to kind of chat some stuff out, okay? So, first thing on the agenda, I know we've talked about it a couple times, is our board retreat on April 23rd. Our first retreat, and everybody should have the email, so just to give the community some, a heads up, as a board, we had everybody brainstorm what they felt were high-impact areas of concern, that we felt that we should be focusing on and working to leverage with our administration to really hone in on these things as items of importance to us. We have a very long list, and I collected that list. We've not discussed them at all. So, with that being said, the floor is open for conversation regarding our April 23rd agenda. Let's not fight over who goes first.
You mentioned it's a retreat, but just to clarify, it's, it's in this building, right?
It will be in this building, yes.
Somewhere sunny and warm.
No, it is not, unless the sun finally decides to come out in Cleveland, and go above 55. So, yes, it'll be here. It is a, what we consider a special board meeting, so the public is welcome to attend as well. It'll be in this space and/or, depending on attendance, we might move to a conference room, just to kind of make it more collaborative in nature, and it's going to be about four hours long. So, it will be a long meeting. I sent over proposed consolidated ideas. What are your thoughts about those? I will announce those in a minute.
I think, everything I've seen so far makes sense in terms of what all you're consolidating here. I think we really want to start talking in terms of how we can better communicate with each other, as well as how we can really engage the community. So, I, I noticed you've got the community communication here as part of that. Maybe we, maybe we need to talk about calamity days. Inside joke. You know, but it, everything you've got kind of set up here makes, makes sense, based on everything that we forwarded to you.
So, one of the things that was universal from all five members, as well as Dr. Thompson and Mr. Tarnello, they were asked to also add ideas, was that community communication needs to increase and be a little bit more frequent and timely, focusing on three areas, community members that do not have students actively attending the school, and then families who have students attending, and then also students. So, just really making sure they understand what's going on as well. So, that was one area. Mr. Vittori, or Mr. Roscos, Ms. Menzer, what are your thoughts about community communication as an, an idea to solidify on our agenda?
Well, I certainly think it's important. I often think, I have, what, three kids? One kid is out of this district, and I have twins that are seniors, and so, I feel like I'm very well informed as a community, as a, as a member, but I have kids in the district, so I get emails sent from principals, from superintendent. I feel like I'm very well informed as a parent of a child in the district, but I can also see if you're not plugging into those communication streams, how someone might not know that things are going on or not going on within the district. So, I'm all for broadening that communication path outside of people, because we're all, we've got, this district has folks that are in the schools, parents of kids that are in the schools, and also retirees, people that don't have any kids, and so, we're all one big community, so we've got to get that word out. Now, whether or not people in the community will want to receive it, because we're going to be putting it out there, and we're hoping that people are going to catch it, you know, as we put it out, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I think it's important to, to try to engage other, I guess, stakeholders in the community, like you said, besides, uh, parents, you know, so whatever we can do in that regard to increase communication there, and also hopefully have more opportunities to interact with those groups.
I think communication was important to all five of us, and that was a big topic to put on the retreat agenda.
I'd like to see, too, how can we get some of the students in the district to, you know, engage with us more as well?
Okay. So, is it fair to say that community communication as a whole is absolutely an item, maybe number one item on the agenda for the retreat? Okay. And just to kind of point out, this is something that we've expressed as a board to Dr. Thompson and Mr. Tarnello, and recently, in the last two to three months, there has been a significant effort on the part of the administration to get that communication out there. The Facebook page has routine updates going on with every single school, social media is being pushed out there, so I know the administration is committed to that, and there, I think we, our conversation needs to be, as a board, how are we getting out maybe some larger publications, maybe hitting all cities, and focusing on the non-parent communication, right? So, I'll kind of put that up there. Okay. Also, too, I know that Mr. Tarnello recently did an update to the treasurer's website, just to kind of provide some more information as well, so the ball's already kind of rolling. Now, it's, it's up to us to kind of put together a long-term strategic plan for that. Okay. The next item that seemed to be universal for everybody was district finances and/or levy-related. So, what are your thoughts about having that as another item?
At first, I think that's hugely important. I think we, I think everyone is tired of the term levy. It's a four-letter word, spelled with different letters themselves, you know? I think we have a school district that is run predominantly through an emergency operating basis, so all the levies are term-based, they are not perpetual. Most, I'm gathering some facts, but most school districts within the state of Ohio are permanent levy-based, and not based on terms. And I think there's a lot of fatigue in the community, I being one as a voter, to see, it seems like there's a levy on the ballot every so often, and too, too frequently. But the message with it is that it is a, these are renewal levies, so these are not, the ones that are coming up in the next year or two are all renewals of existing taxes. So, I think to get that message out, as we talk through it in the retreat, to formulate a strategy, to talk through, get the proper information out in a way that gets a good message out of what these things are, because no one wants to see any more levies, but here they are. These are the way they're designed, and we, hopefully, sometime long-term, we can change that, so we don't have to, you know, have to go through this term-based levy process. I think that's counterproductive to the community.
Do we want to stay levy-specific? I know Mr. Tarnello's been working on, kind of trying to figure out some strategy to kind of help us overcome some of these hurdles. Do we want to also focus on district finances, or do we want to break out space just with, really evaluating our levy position, current as well as future? And then, maybe do finances in a little, a separate portion? Keep them?
Probably separate.
Okay. Separate portion, okay. So, what I'm thinking for communication, because we, we all know we could talk for eight hours straight if we needed to, so I'm thinking for communication about a good 30, 30 minutes or so? Okay. And then, probably another 30 for the levy, because that's not a levy, all of our levies. Okay. Do we feel that we're comfortable with that? Okay. Now, there's a few other things on here. We have mental health services, the construction of board and/or administrator-supported committees, and then, we also had a couple hodgepodge things for curriculum enhancement, specifically focused on project-based learning, increasing the elective options that we have for our high schoolers, like foreign languages, the SOI High School concept, we have only up to eighth grade now, and SOI High School has been a conversation, we've had it in the past and had to discontinue it, and then also student culture in general, just kind of to help build that culture. So, within mental health services committees, and then curriculum enhancement, what are your thoughts there? If you had to pick one, what would it be? And we can always do another retreat.
I know.
Do we have to pick one?
No, I think. We can absolutely do all of them if you would like, and we can just allocate some times to it. So, if we were to do it, if we're 30/30, that's an hour of four hours, that leaves us three hours left, and if we did 30/30/30, we're down to an hour and a half left. And Dr. Thompson and Mr. Tarnello have asked for an hour and 15 minutes, because they want to re-go over the five-year forecast. We need to discuss the district facilities and the alternative school, which I know is also on everybody else's list, and the, the healthcare discussion. So, that would pretty much comprise our day with a break, which would pretty much cover everything except for the evaluative process of the Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer, but we could call a special meeting in May and focus specifically on evaluation. Is that okay? Okay. So, I'm going to slate it here, that evaluation for the Board Superintendent and Treasurer will be a May special meeting. We'll decide on those dates at a later time. We'll allocate 30 minutes to mental health services committees and curriculum enhancement, and then give Dr. Thompson and Mr. Tarnello their time. I want to throw a suggestion out there. I know I am the president of the board, and I speak the most, based on policy and precedent. However, I would love to see for this meeting to have a topic area covered by a, a board member, meaning maybe, John, you do levies, mental health services, Lawrence, and prepare things in advance to share, to make the meeting move along a little bit more. So, maybe compiling ideas, working with Dr. Thompson and Mr. Tarnello, or other members of the administration to kind of compile information on that topic, and then share with the board prior to coming to the meeting, so we have time to review. It'll help expedite our time and make us more efficient. What are your thoughts? It would also not be me leading the entire meeting. It really, I mean, right? I know you guys all have amazing ideas, so what are your thoughts about those areas? Kind of taking lead on them? Okay. So, I don't think we need to decide that tonight, but I can send out an email, maybe send a message back, which one is the area of your focus? Okay. Okay. It's going to be a great meeting, April 23rd, from 1 to 5. We invite everybody to come. And that's complete and honest truth. We would love to have the community sit in and see and listen. A board retreat is, is something that we know we need to do, and we'll be doing more often, so we can have more transparent and direct communication with each other in the community's presence. Okay. Okay. So, there's our board retreat ideas. Anything else there? Okay. With that, there's only one other thing that I had for the board discussion, and that was, I had a meeting with our attorney from Walter Haverfield, I always have a hard time saying that, Mr. Eric Johnson. Once again, just reiterating, we're going to be receiving an email from him today or tomorrow on the do's and don'ts for us as board members with regards to the previously discussed issue with levy communications, board members with the lawsuit from the Attorney General. That is not specific to Willoughby East Lake, it is a lawsuit that's pending in the State House at the state level with another school based on their actions. However, it is impacting how all school boards and administrators of schools can discuss levies, and there's, there's very little guidance from the Attorney General's office on potential changes and/or impacts. So, we've requested the do's and don'ts that were provided from the Attorney General, so that we can make sure we fall in line with those precedents. So, that'll be coming over in our emails. Okay. Welcome. Okay. So, if there's anything else, any other topics? So, we'll move on to item five, our minutes. Item 5A is the approval of minutes from March 14th of 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item A, approval of minutes from March 14th, 2022?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 5A, minutes of March 14th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Roscos. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. Mrs. Crooks?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roscos?
Yes.
Mr. Vittori?
Yes.
Ms. Menzler?
Yes.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Okay. We'll move on to item six, our treasurer's report, and Mrs. Crooks, this is your area.
I've brought notes from Mr. Tarnello and the financial report. He says, on page one, you'll notice that the cash balance is within $230,000 of the estimated amount to date. You also notice that both revenue and expenditures lagging behind our estimates. Our revenue is lagging since the rollout of House Bill 110 in January 2022. We are currently at 67.57% of expected through 75% of the year. We're reviewing this closely as additional reports become available. We collected 100.05% of our estimated property tax revenues for the year. Our expenditures are beginning to see an increase in purchase services due to the timing of invoices. 6B, amended appropriations. There have been increases to some of our funds due to the acceptance of various local grants, as well as receiving some additional state and federal grants. 6C, grant application acceptance. The GPD Employees Foundation has awarded Julie Blair, Royal View Assistant Principal, a $5,000 2022 public school grant. The grant will be used to renovate the sensory room, and is titled Royal View Real: Reflect, Energize, Assist, Learn. According to the application, the funds will be used to improve and open up the use of the sensory self-regulation room to the entire student body. 6D, establishment of new account. This is to establish a new account for the grant that is to be accepted in 6C. 6E, purchase orders and blanket certificates. Then, now, these are for items that either exceeded their purchase orders by $3,000, or a purchase order was put in place after receiving the invoice. Blanket certificates. These are items that are placed before the board on an annual basis. 6F, transfers of funds to termination benefits. This is to transfer funds into the fund that pays severance to employees. This fund is getting low because we have anticipated retirements in the next few months with the end of school, the school year approaching. 6G, student activity accounts. These are to amend budgets to student activities so they can begin to spend those funds. And 6H, gifts and donations. The Longfellow PTA donated $11,000 to Longfellow for partial payment of a gym divider curtain. The Longfellow PTA donated $2,356 to Longfellow's music department. Premier Paint Technologies, Jobbers Automotive LLC donated automotive paint and cleaner valued at $2,357.65 to NCIW Auto Collision. We would like to thank them all for their donations.
Thank you, Mrs. Crooks. I, I have to say, when we went on the school tours, we got to see at Longfellow, and they were very excited about that divider, and it's going to do some amazing things to kind of open that space up to be used in different ways, and I know that they're really going to excite that, be excited about that. And NCI Willoughby, hands down, I am still blown away and thoroughly impressed after visiting there. I would absolutely take my car there to be worked on any day of the week, and for them to have these resources is just, thank you very much to those that donated. It's, it's greatly appreciated. Okay. We'll move on to item- Okay, we'll move on to item 7, Superintendent Resolutions, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam President. The first item for your consideration is a master service agreement with NeoNet, the Northeast Ohio Network for Educational Technology. This agreement is an updated one of our current contract in place with NeoNet. This change will increase our bandwidth across the district from 2G to 10G, and will only increase our annual costs by less than $1,400. The school district purchases internet service at a discount rate of 60% through the federal E-rate program.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve item 7A, master service agreement with NeoNet, Northeast Ohio Network for Educational Technology?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Boxler?
I will make a motion to pass item 7A, master service agreement with NeoNet, Northeast Ohio Network for Educational Technology.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'd second that motion.
Thank you very much, the floor is open for a discussion. Mr. Murphy, I have a question.
Yes.
So what prompted us needing to increase our bandwidth?
Well, the increased use of technology, we have been adding computers and Chromebooks across the district. And so with the increase of usage comes the need for increase in bandwidth.
And where are we at with the one-to-one technology rollout?
We're moving along probably even more ahead of schedule than anticipated. Andrea Tredent, our Director of Technology, and her department and team are doing an outstanding job with working with staff and preparing for the rollout. We have started with some grade levels already, and we're looking to continue that throughout the end of the year and again, starting next school year.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Crooks, can you take a roll?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Menzler?
Yes.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Madam President, the second item for your consideration is the 22-23 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. As part of our athletic program, school districts belong to athletic associations. Willoughby Eastlake is a member of the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and it is their job to oversee athletics in Ohio, enforce rules and regulations, and assist us with conference memberships. This is the annual renewal of the district's membership to this association.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve item 7B, 2022-2023 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 7B, membership in the Ohio Athletics Association.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskos, the floor is now open for discussion.
Mr. Murphy, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Why is the cost to be a member of OHSAA?
I'm going to have to get back to you on that, I don't see that information readily handy. I know it's a fairly minimal amount, though.
Okay, and then other than being able to participate in tournaments run by OHSAA, what are the other benefits the district receives by being a member?
Good question. One of the main benefits in addition to the one that you had just mentioned is the fact that when schools play other schools in conference games, they get points for beating those schools, which then will in turn affect their participation seeding in state tournaments. And so if Willoughby Eastlake was not a part of OHSAA, then those schools that would play us would not get points and would not get credit towards moving up in the seeding, which would be very important to schools for tournament play. Therefore, we would have trouble, I believe, filling out our schedule and having competition for our student athletes to participate in.
And why, is there a date that we have to decide to be a member, is there like a drop dead date?
Yes, actually, we just received correspondence from OHSAA, and May 15th is the date. And the reason is, I believe, from my understanding, is that they are already starting to set up schedules and things for fall sports. And so that's not done in the fall, they play in the fall, so that's done well in advance so teams could make preparations and fill out their schedule otherwise. So that's their typical date, and that's the date for this year.
Thank you.
Are there any other alternative organizations to affiliate with for point-based or state-based play for tournaments to kind of advance our student athletes?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So this is it?
Do you know of any other schools or districts that are not part of this?
No, I do not. Every school that I've ever worked for and those in our conference are all part of OHSAA.
And Mr. Murphy, once again, thank you for being here tonight. And Dr. Thompson, instead, a few more questions. So if, how to put this? Obviously, OSHA is a third-party organization that we would be affiliating with and agreeing to the terms and conditions of their bylaws. So we would, so for example, if my student wrestled, then they would have to fall into the weight classifications based on the rules put forth by OSHA, or they compete in a track meet. So they're putting those things in place for us, and do we have any, do we as a school board, or do our administrators have any say in how their bylaws are constructed?
I do not know that we have any say in terms of how their bylaws are constructed. I do know that their bylaws typically follow any kind of rules, laws, regulations. So, you know, much like our policies, you'll see later on, you'll see our first read in policies. For example, you know, any changes that we make to those policies are always predicated on changes in law or statute. Well, OHSAA operates in a very similar manner, in which case their rules and bylaws are typically predicated on or consistent with statute and laws.
I had reached out to Dr. Thompson and asked him, as we always do, when we see things on the agenda, we always ask questions and we reach out. We can speak as much as we want with our superintendent and our treasurer, one-on-one, prior to a meeting. We just can't discuss things as a board. And one of the things that Dr. Thompson had also communicated is that our athletic director and/or other members of the administration could potentially participate in discussions with OSHA when they have their bylaw communications. But ultimately, we're just one school.
Right.
And they will, they have their own Board of Directors. So if I wanted to really understand more about it, really reaching out to OSHA directly would be my best way to do it as a community member.
Absolutely.
I know, we obviously received one email in regards to this, right, today? Everybody received that email. And we have an individual, Mr. O'Keefe, who spoke Republic Participation. And I think they bring valid points to the table. And this is just me personally speaking right now. Whenever making a decision to vote on something, I always do like a pros and cons list. And I think the pros right now is it allows our students to gainfully participate in sports, which allows them to advance in a lot of different ways. And all the benefits for sports and the association with OSHA right now, I think, are important to retain. And that's just me personally, I think the pros outweigh the cons.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a statement.
Of course.
Prior to voting on this agenda item.
Absolutely.
So no matter what I say right now, will sway your opinion. However, I feel it needs to be said, as a mother of two daughters who could potentially be impacted by OHSAA policies and bylaws, this is an important matter. Given the recent policies and conference agenda that OHSAA has put out, I cannot in good conscience support this organization. I'm not just speaking for myself, but I was elected by thousands of voters, and my constituents depend on me being their voice. Biological males should not be allowed to participate in female sports, and biological females should not participate in male sports. If we are members of OHSAA, we must follow their bylaws, and the line must be drawn. We have to stop this pandering immediately. The integrity of women's sports depend on it because biologically, we inherently have certain traits that contribute to one's success in a sport.
Okay, thank you for sharing that, of course. I think it's really important that every voice, every person on this board has a voice, and we have to consider all angles on every issue that we consider in a resolution.
So this vote is to whether or not we continue to join, or do we have time before the 15th?
So the vote would be to continue to join. And if we do not, and I did speak with Dr. Thompson directly, if we do not vote to join before May 15th, we would be ineligible for the entire year next year.
And there's basically no viable alternative for athletics in the state of Ohio other than to be part of this association?
You're correct. So. Other discussion? All right, hearing none, Mrs. Crooks, can you take a roll?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Menzler?
No.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
The next item for your consideration, Madam President, is the Facility Use Agreement for the Performing Arts Center, the PAC, with the indemnity and insurance requirements. This agreement will be used when outside organizations or agencies would like to rent the Performing Arts Center, also known as the PAC. This explains in detail the rental fees, expectations they will need to follow when renting our space, and also the amount of insurance they will need to carry when renting the facility. This contract was written with the assistance of our district legal team.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve item 7C, Facility Use Agreement for the Performing Arts Center PAC with indemnity and insurance requirements?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 7C, Facility Use Agreement for the PAC with indemnity and insurance requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Roskos, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler, the floor is open for discussion. Mr. Murphy, I did have a question, as I always do. How often, it's one thing you can depend on. So how often are we renting out our facilities?
Well, this, you know, we haven't rented it out very often up until now, largely in some regard because of the pandemic, of course. And being a large district, we do use, we need the facility quite a bit, especially certain months out of the year. It seems to always be in use. So it doesn't leave a lot of time to be able to rent out the facility to outside organizations, but whenever we can, we do want to take advantage of that opportunity. It will generate some revenue for us, which would help us in maintaining and upkeeping the facility.
Maybe in the summer would be probably more opportunities, right?
Sure.
Because the school would be out, drama clubs done.
Hundred percent.
So our school activities programs would always take precedence over any?
They sure would.
Okay. Awesome, other discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Crooks?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Menzler?
Yes.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
The next item for your consideration, Madam President, is a special service agreements. There's actually three. In this item, you'll see three agreements. Two of these are with LEAF, which stands for the Lake Geoga Educational Assistance Foundation, and pertain to North and South High Schools. This group partners with the district to assist students as they prepare for graduation. They provide families and students with information about things such as how to fill out the FASFA. If you ever had to do that, assistance is greatly appreciated, I can say from firsthand experience. And also how to obtain financial aid and scholarships. Again, sending two kids to college, you know, we can use all the scholarships, I'm sure, we can find, as most families believe. They also help students learn additional information about career pathways upon graduation. This service agreement is one that we have offered students and their families for many years, so this is not new. The third agreement is in agreement with LLA Therapy Services. This agency provides services to Willoughby Eastlake students that are currently being educated at re-ed services in Mentor. This agency is able to provide any of the therapy services needed by our students, such as speech, occupational therapy, or physical therapy.
Wonderful, and this would kind of coincide with this time of year. I know we have a list on our community page on our website, as well as on our Facebook page, of all those scholarship opportunities and their deadlines. So that would be included in this to kind of help them really meet those deadlines and prepare for those requirements.
Absolutely.
Okay. It doesn't need a vote.
Oh, that's right, thank you. And then the final item we have in Superintendent Resolutions is item E, which is the Personnel Agenda. And each month, the changes in district personnel are required to be approved by the Board of Education. These changes will include retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts, and some of the payments made to people that may have worked at an athletic event. All persons are employed pending receipt of satisfactory records from the Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation, the Ohio Department of Education, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation, or for whom such records have been received and final receipt of appropriate required certification and licensure. On the agenda, you'll see many of these examples. And I would like to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Heather Dodd, who's sitting over there in the middle. Oh, thank you, Heather. Mrs. Dodd is currently one of our Special Education Supervisors, and she applied for the position and is on this board for approval to be the next Director of Pupil Services. Mrs. Dodd was interviewed by a committee of teachers, classified staff, and administration, and was quite impressive, both with the depth of her answers to all of our questions. And also, we had each candidate in the finals do a presentation. And so her presentation was also outstanding, she was clearly impressed the committee. And in her work here in the district for the last seven, yep, seven years, has been equally impressive, which earned her this opportunity. She certainly will have big shoes to fill there of Mrs. Eileen Bowers back there, who is retiring this year, and that'll be for another day. But I can definitely am confident that Mrs. Dodd is not only up for the challenge, but will be an asset to our district in this new role.
Welcome, Mrs. Dodd. Okay, wonderful, so we'll now move on to, and Mr. Murphy, thank you very much. And Mrs. Crooks, once again, thank you for covering those items for us. So we're now moving on to item 8, Superintendent Policies. Item 8A is the first reading of the following. And Mr. Murphy, if you can kind of help us with this one?
I sure can, I would normally, even if I weren't over here.
I know.
This is what I do. So this is the first read of changes in additions to board policies. Our school district contracts with Neola, who works with more than 500 Ohio school districts in order to help all the districts keep their policies up to date. Twice a year, Neola publishes updates in order to keep school districts compliant with changes in federal and state laws or government regulations. They also publish special updates throughout the year if they need to, if the timing doesn't work out for those twice-a-year updates for more urgent consideration. Following the release of each update, we work with an associate from Neola, who actually comes out and provides consultation, reviews each one of the policies that are before you, with me. We sit down and talk about each one. The process ensures that our policies and guidelines always reflect the most recent updates in the law. And so when changing policies, they must be presented, read at at least two meetings. So like I said, this is the first one of the reads. And so, again, these changes are always changes that are brought about because of some change or update in some sort of law or regulation. I just want to stress this, just not Chuck Murphy saying, oh, well, I think we should just update this policy just because. You know, it is for a reason, and so, but it is nice having that representative there to explain who sat in with their in-house attorneys that have actually written the updates. And so he kind of gives us the why behind it and that kind of thing.
And then these documents, are we talking?
Well, not yet, not yet. One second. Do I hear a motion to approve item 8A, first reading of the following policies?
Madam President, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 8A, first reading of these policy updates.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Roskos, the floor is now open for discussion.
All right, thanks.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
So Chuck, the, so Neola redlines these documents themselves. So there's the policy, there's the impact to, based on the code updates, and then they redline it, and then what we see on our screens are the redline version.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And so you'll see anything that might be an addition, or sometimes there'll be deletions, which usually end up just being another addition, you know, right after, but yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Murphy, as we spend time swimming through each of these policies, if we have questions or have concerns with them in any way, we'd reach out directly to you.
Yes, absolutely.
This is the one time we would skip Dr. Thompson.
Yes, he usually always refers the board to me on these because, you know, I've spent the time working with them.
And then I did have a question, merely because this hasn't become before me as a board member yet, is that when we get the policies, and you've obviously done the legwork with Neola, if we review it, and maybe there's something controversial, like we no longer want pepperoni pizza. I don't know. And
That would be very controversial.
It would be very controversial. We want better pepperoni pizza. So ultimately, we could have that conversation with you because the board policies are the board's. Depending on what it is, we have sometimes a say in what the policy is, but other times, it's following Ohio revise code.
Right, and that's what I would help determine for you if there was, you know, and even, you know, just to make sure that it was something that your proposed change didn't violate Ohio revise code. But in most of the changes that you see in here, again, almost all of them, I would say all of them, except for, I just, you never know, but typically, most all of them are required changes. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you're looking forward. But certainly, if you have questions, let me know, and I can tell you, yeah, that part was a required change, this part wasn't, or something like that. But typically, 99% of it is.
Thank you.
Just one note, I don't think we have to vote on it yet because it's the first reading, so we probably should.
That's correct.
Right.
Where is its asterisk?
Yeah, I had mixed, I didn't have the asterisk right. I also don't have it listed to check.
Okay. We are improving with every board meeting, and this will be an opportunity to learn and grow. Okay.
Keeping us on our toes.
Every time. One day, we'll be a veteran board, and we won't blink an eye at any agenda. So thank you very much, John, our parliamentary expert. Okay, well, then I guess we can move on. If there's hearing, no more discussion, are we good? Any more conversation or questions? Okay, moving on to item nine, meeting notification, 9A. The next regular board meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Monday, May 9th, of 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building of 35353 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake, Ohio. And then we'll move on to item 10A, the adoption of our consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve item 10A, adoption of consent calendar?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to adopt the second.
Thank you, Ms. Menzler. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Discussion, hearing none. Mrs. Crooks?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Menzler?
Yes.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Okay, move on to item 11, closing, 11A, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Roskos. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Wish you all a wonderful evening. Thank you.